Call to order a meeting for the Normal Town Council for Monday, October 3rd, 2022. Please call to roll.
Mayor Kuz?
Here.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Here.
Mr. Nord?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Harris? Mr. Preston?
Here.
Mr. McCarthy?
Here.
As always, we'll begin with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no public comment tonight, so we'll go to the omnibus agenda items considered routine, and we'll be taking one vote unless a council member would like to pull an item for discussion. Mr. Nord?
I'd like to pull item B as in boys, C as in Charles, E as in Edward.
What was the last one? I'm sorry.
E as in Echo.
That's B as in boys, C as in Charlie, and E as in Echo. Correct. Motion for approval?
So move.
Second.
Items considered under omnibus are approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of September 19th, 2022, approval of the minutes of the special council meeting of September 26th, 2022, a resolution to accept bids and authorize a contract with Ideal Environmental of Bloomington, Illinois for lead-based paint services, and an ordinance authorizing the early payoff of the 2004 Special Service Area SSA bonds on 12/1/2022, and approve approval of the related agreement with CH Shops LLC. Please call to roll.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mayor Kuz?
Aye. Those items are approved. B is a report to receive and file town of normal report to receive and file town of normal expenditures for payment as of September 28th, 2022. Mr. Nord?
I so move.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Nord?
The expense I've got is on expense page five, under Innovation and Technology. There's an expense to Serbin for connectivity at Conny Link for $5,132. And I had emailed IT about this earlier to find out what this was. This was to provide Wi-Fi at Conny Link. Apparently, this must be new installation of internet service, just Wi-Fi service, but the expense is over $5,000. And I thought this was a little high because, gosh, I'm sure all of us have paid to have internet put at our home. Possibly some of you have had internet installed at a home that did not have it run to the property, and it is not that much money. I know one of the major providers that also has TV service, well, one of the other vendors that the town uses, they have ran internet over a mile and didn't charge anything for the connectivity to put it to a building. I don't know if they still do this, but, gosh, new houses get this. So it sounded high. Then I look at the purchasing policy, and for a dollar amount over $3,000, the purchasing policy says that there needs to be a minimum of three quotes or sufficient justification to warrant purchasing from the specific vendor. Well, this is over that minimum. There were no three quotes gotten. It doesn't seem that there was any effort put to make sure that this was a reasonable expense to taxpayers. So the policy doesn't seem to be followed. The policy says that transactions relating to expenditure of public funds require the highest degree of public trust to protect the interests of the town and its residents. Some reasons, it's to ensure that public money is spent efficiently and effectively in accordance with all applicable laws in town policy to purchase without favor or prejudice, you know, and that it's to ensure that fair and equal consideration is given and that we're spending money based on the lowest responsible bidder. And kind of, now, there's also a conflict of interest policy here, which says no employee may participate in the purchasing process if the employee knows any of the following. And some that I think are important is that the employee, the employee or immediate family member holds a critical position, and it gives some examples, an officer, director, trustee, or partner. So my question then for staff would be, was this policy followed? Because it says we need three quotes unless there's sufficient justification to warrant. So what's that sufficient justification?
Sure. I will try to explain, Mr. Nord, I'll pull up the email from earlier just so I can
Before you do...
See how Ms. Garaju explained it.
Excuse me. Before you do, are you the treasurer for Serbin still?
No, I don't believe I am. I am on the board. I'm not the treasurer.
Okay. Well, according to this purchasing policy, it says that if you're on the board, you're not supposed to be a part of this discussion. No policy may participate in the purchasing process if the employee knows, well, if the employee is an immediate family member or holds a critical position, officer, director, trustee, and you are with Serbin, so with all due respect, this is the policy. I didn't create the policy. I'm just trying to enforce it.
With all due respect, I'm just trying to explain it. So if you...
Is that, are we, are we able to do that, Mr. Day?
Yeah, certainly she can explain the purchase.
Being a director, being a director for this company?
Yes.
I've responded, I have responded to Serbin questions for four years. I, but I will, I'll explain what this particular acquisition is and what the bill is, so council can be aware. The $5,132 expense is a one-time payment to Serbin for public Wi-Fi access points. So it's the acquisition and installation of equipment. Serbin currently provides Uptown public Wi-Fi. The town pays a monthly fee for that connectivity. The same service is extended to the Conny Link public Wi-Fi. Since the events at Conny Link and Uptown seldom overlap, we believed it made sense for the town to maximize the use of connectivity that we are already paying for in Uptown. We don't have any additional monthly fees to add Conny Link to our public Wi-Fi portfolio. When we've, so we added this particular site, Conny Link, to the Serbin agreement that covers Uptown Wi-Fi. If we're going to a new provider, our experience has been that we would need to pay for not only equipment installation, but also a monthly service charge. That's why we moved forward with this particular additional location for a Serbin installation for public Wi-Fi. So hopefully that explains why we did what we did. I believe it complies with the procurement policy, but again, if not, I guess we'll address that separately.
So I know it's too late to undo this expense, but going forward, I would like to know, I would like the effort to have been made to show the public that we did at least make a reasonable attempt to confirm that these costs are competitive. Because like I said, I have extended it to a property that they put it in for nearly a mile, no charge. We've done it to our house, and then there's a fiber company that did it to our house as well. Never charges, it's just that monthly reoccurring, we're talking, you know, around $100. Includes, it also includes equipment. So for $5,100, how many months of somebody else's service could we have paid for? Are the questions that I have. And this policy, you know, I keep going back to it because an unenforced policy is no policy at all. So if we're not going to follow the policy, change the policy, and then I won't have a reason to ask. Thank you. That was all I had for this.
Mr. Day?
Yeah, certainly. Just a couple of points on that. I think City Manager Reese explained the rational reason why we chose Serbin over other vendors. Obviously, the...
Sorry, Mr. Day, but you gotta get on it.
A public entity's Wi-Fi service isn't going to be anything like running something to somebody's house. But that aside, I want to talk about the conflict of interest because we've talked about this a number of times with these entities that are associations such as Serbin. Serbin is an association made up of local, who's owned by the local government bodies. It was created specifically for the purpose of providing the wireless service to the bodies that it serves, among others. But that's particularly one of the reasons why we have directors on that board, and that's different than a simple arms-length transaction where we're talking with somebody that we're completely unaffiliated with. So in those cases, there wouldn't be a conflict. The town of Normal is an owner of Serbin. So if that were the case, then we couldn't use Serbin at all for anything. So we have a board of directors because we are, we have a member of the board of directors under the bylaws of Serbin because we are an owner of Serbin.
That should also make...
So in effect, this is actual oversight of an organization we're a comparsal owner of.
Correct. Thank you.
Please call to roll.
I've got to follow.
Mr. Nord, go right ahead.
Any relationship we have with one of these associations, also, we should look at it from the light of, are we making a decision without favor or prejudice? You know, so being on these boards also then brings that question that we have to address before we decide to purchase from them, especially if there's commercial entities now that have entered that market that are doing it for less cost. I mean, government has created all kinds of things that were high cost at one time, GPS. You know, now the private sector has taken that over. So at some point, the private sector should take over, you know, this other entity. Thank you.
Further on the item? Please call to roll.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Kuz?
Aye. That item is approved. Item C is a resolution waiving the formal bid process and authorizing the execution of a license agreement addendum with Zen City to implement online digital platform. Mr. Nord?
I so move.
Second.
Mr. Nord?
I'd like to hear how council has been able to use this Zen City information. Like what has been presented to council from all this data that's been collected from Zen City? How have we used it?
I would say I get almost daily emails about data from Zen City. And as I haven't looked at the tagline, I would assume it's sent to all council members.
Has any other council member received information from Zen City? I'm curious, because I have not received anything from Zen City. So if you're getting daily, then it's not going to the entire council. My question then is going to be, why is everybody else getting it and I'm not? That's why I'm asking, are any other council members getting this information?
I think I get it because I'm the mayor.
Okay. Well, this information isn't being used for the council to make a decision then, is kind of what I'm reading into this. But with Zen City, this is a tool that the town uses to go out and surveil what people are saying on social media and collect information on what people are saying. It's not asking the public. So it also then doesn't hit a segment of the population that doesn't go onto social media. So this isn't a grand tool that's going to surveil everyone. I would like public input to be input that we're actually hearing from the public. But too many times, we hear the public coming to us, telling us, well, what they want us to do, what they want us not to do, and we ignore them. So I went to see, well, he chuckled, but we had Blackstone Trail. Every resident in there came to us, well, right before I was elected, I was having to be in the audience, and the council went the other direction. The mural, we've got Winter Green, we've got...
Point of order, Mayor. We are so far away from a conversation about Zen City software.
Back to Zen City, Mr. Nord.
So I would like to see those initiatives ramped up for public communication, to actually hear from the public, not surveil the public, before we spend more money.
Further on this item, Mr. McCarthy?
I'm in favor of a multiple ways of interacting with our public, not one at a time and only one. So I, this is a, this and that strategy, I don't think it was ever intended to be an all-encompassing tool when it was originally presented to us as a council. It was a way to get smarter about our use of social media and the social media interactions. And because it is a social media tool, of course, it doesn't do anything else. It doesn't survey people who aren't on social media. It's a tool for that purpose. And so I don't think we should cease our surveilling of our social media presence and impact and understanding of ways to use it in favor of some other strategy. I'd be curious at some point if there's other ideas to hear what our communications department has to say about that before council just starts weighing in on stuff without professional guidance. So I'm supportive of this because I think it's one piece of a strategy, and I think at least the little bit that I've gone out and got is insightful and informative. But that's my view. Thanks.
Ms. Smith?
It's been two years since I walked away from my teaching at ISU, but one of the things that I had to adapt to is the fact that in my later years, the students were not reading or using emails or the course site that I had created. And when I did create that, it was emphasized that you had to try to meet the student where they were. And I think having the ability to interact with citizens who are on social media and may use that as their preferred interaction over email, over US Postal Mail, over a phone call, I think the more we can connect with citizens and give them a voice, the better. And I think an example of how engaged our citizens were just happened this past week, when I would estimate there were 50, 50-plus residents that came to share their thoughts on what the vision was for Uptown South. And so I think this is just giving us another avenue to connect with citizens. So I'm in favor.
Mr. Nord?
Thank you. How can we get these daily emails that you get sent to the entire council? Can I make a motion that that happens so that way we can start using the data as a council instead of a mayor's tool?
I don't think that's necessary. I'll find out what the daily emails are and I don't know that mine are coming daily, but I'll certainly make, I'll find out what emails are coming out with what information and make sure that we add you all, whoever wants additional emails, can access them.
Sure. I would like whatever the mayor's getting automated, sent to myself as well, and, you know, the rest of the council, because they should get that same information. I mean, we're paying for it.
One quick thing to note that I'll share with council and certainly the audience is, Zen City actually has evolved since we started using them in 2018. And council might recall that when we came to you with our initial plan on how to use American Rescue Plan Act dollars, that was, that included survey responses. And I think we had over 800 or so survey responses. So, and that survey tool was coordinated by Zen City. So they are, they continue to expand their level of service to local governments. This particular online digital platform, I didn't, I didn't share information earlier when we started talking about this topic, but the town's team did interview five potential vendors for this sort of engagement tool, and this is just one tool. It's one of many things that we keep growing and expanding and trying to find ways where citizens can learn more about what we're doing and share insights. So this, this just allows us another opportunity, so.
I would point out, too, that the data that you will get from that is not interaction with the, with the citizens in any way. It's just an overview of what they're, what people are talking about on social media, having to do with the, with the town of Normal. And what they're doing is monitoring that data, putting it in a format so you can tell kind of a general mood of what people are talking about. Further on this item? Please call to roll.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
No.
Mayor Kuz?
Aye. The item is approved. Item E is a resolution accepting bids and authorizing a purchase of a forklift for the Public Works Waste Removal Division from Fitzgerald Equipment Company Incorporated in the amount of $33,895. Mr. Nord?
I so move.
Second.
Mr. Nord?
So we have talked in the past, and I think maybe Finance had mentioned that we would consider extending the life of some of our equipment a little bit longer. And a forklift, I know forklifts, I've had lots of forklifts over the years. And this particular forklift, it's 11 years old, only has 1,975 hours on it. All right, which may sound like a lot until you do the math to see how many hours a day does, or how many hours a week is this thing used? So we're talking 3.4 hours a week, if you do the math, for a machine to be used. So obviously, this isn't being used heavily, all right? You know, not like at one of the big box stores where you see them going around all the time, or, you know, Lumber Yard, or even at Rivian. If you go online to look at things that are about this age, there's ones that have 10,000-plus hours that are being sold, you know, for companies to use. So this one isn't used that much. It doesn't have a whole lot of hours. And I asked staff if there's any reason that this thing would not last another year. And they said no. In fact, this isn't something that they're trading in. This is something that they're going to get a new machine and give this one to, I think it was some other department that, you know, obviously doesn't use a forklift that much anyway, otherwise they would be asking for, asking for it instead of Public Works. So I just don't see the need that this has to be replaced right away. It has very, very, very few hours, and it's hardly critical. And I would like to see if we can extend this for a year and maybe put $30,000 into some more pothole repairs, you know, some other infrastructure thing. So I'd like to hear from council to see what you think.
Can I, can I first respond, Mayor?
Sure.
Not surprised to hear your thoughts. Just a couple of quick things. I don't believe, Mr. Nord, I don't believe staff said no, it couldn't be retained for a year. In fact, I think we said yes, it could, but it would reduce the number of hours that we could use it because of reliability and perhaps some ongoing maintenance needs. It was explained, as, as Mr. Nord, as you just indicated, that this particular piece of equipment is, has been budgeted and proposed for replacement this year, and the existing, an 11-year-old forklift, it would then go to another department to be used as a hand-me-down. The other department that's receiving it has been using a hand-me-down forklift for over five years. So that particular old forklift then would go to surplus auction. So there is kind of a progression of the equipment going through the system. In terms of taking, of delaying acquisition of this particular forklift and not spending $33,895, we, council doesn't want to buy the equipment, fine, we'll reject bids and preserve the equipment, but, or preserve the funds, but, but to be clear, we don't take those monies and move them around to a different fund. These dollars are in the Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund. So if you want to take these, this equipment, these equipment replacement dollars and move it to the roadway fund or to the general fund, then we'd have to talk about that because then suddenly the dollars aren't available when we do eventually need to replace the equipment. So I just want to point out, it's kind of not a combined situation. We can either choose not to buy the equipment if the money stays where it is and we hold it for a year, or we move forward and buy the equipment as planned. So just, just putting that up there.
You still have the floor, Mr. Nord?
Okay. The equipment fund, we have regularly bought things out of the equipment fund that's not equipment. And, you know, moving these funds around, I don't see why we wouldn't be able to move them around. I mean, the budget's redone every year. So I don't understand why equipment even matters when we buy all kinds of things that are not equipment out of that fund. And if the machine can be used and it's not causing a problem right now, you know, you're going to give it to another department, too. This is a common forklift. If there is a problem, one can be rented, I mean, easily rented. This is a typical $5,000, no-frills forklift, three-stage mass, 5,000 pound. And if we want to extend the life of something, this would be, this would be a very easy decision to make. And I know it's only $30,000. Even if this thing does break down, we've got the funds to rent something and then buy it because, you know, it's no longer reliable.
Ms. Smith?
Mr. Nord asked for input from other council members and personally...
I'm not going to allow that without an amendment.
I, I just, I just want to say that I am not going to second-guess the professional judgment of staff in their departments making these decisions. So based on the recommendations and the reasons given, I'm in favor of continuing with this approval for this purchase.
Mr. Preston?
Thanks, Mayor. The other department where our current unit will be going to, and they are, that second department is currently using a different, older or more hours forklift now. The older forklift that they're using, is there any mechanical issues with that? I would assume that it, from an hour standpoint and in age, it is older and has less useful life than the one that we're talking about moving from Public Works?
That is correct. And frankly, the department, it would be going from Public Works Waste Removal, where it's used regularly, to the Facilities Maintenance Department and used on a much more limited basis.
And so the current one that today is being used by facilities that will then go to auction, is that, is that one still operable? I mean, doesn't have any major maintenance issues?
I don't, I don't know. I don't know. I assume it's operable, but I don't know about its maintenance history.
Since we have two different departments and two different forklifts that are kind of relevant to this item, I want to make sure.
Well, I'm just going to finish up and caution people that we are, if we're going to get into the weeds deciding whether a piece of equipment at the council table, getting in the weeds to decide if a piece of equipment needs to be replaced or not, I think we're going on a very, very dangerous path, and it sends a very, very bad message to our professional staff that they, they can't evaluate that item appropriately. So I'm just going to throw that caution out as we go forward. And further on the item? Mr. McCarthy?
Yeah, I guess I'd echo Ms. Smith and you, Mayor. I have confidence in staff, but also something that hasn't been said, I like the program. I like we, we use a forklift or a piece of equipment in a department that gets a fair amount of use out of it and then passes it along when there's still life to a department that uses less out of it and keeps us from buying new forklifts in two departments. We extended, so it sounds like we're using a forklift for somewhere between 15 and 20 years, which is, is quite a bit of life for a forklift, but I, nobody's brought that up, but I like that. It saves us money. And, and... Um, and, and, uh, um, don't replace it until it breaks down and then let's rent is always a financially more costly perspective, always. And so, cause you still have to buy it, but now you've rented, which is not, um, as economical as just buying and owning. And so that's always a, a more costly, uh, uh, method, um, because we're frankly paying whatever the market is going to bear when we're in emergency and we need it. And so I'm generally not in favor of those types of options, um, unless we have rental contracts with guaranteed prices that somehow roll into purchase pricing and, and, uh, I know we don't have those. Um, so, but, uh, at any rate, um, I'm not going to second against staff. I think it's a great program. I didn't know that we were rolling and using forklifts for so long between, uh, departments, but, uh, I'm in favor. Thanks.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
No.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Merrickus?
Aye. The item is approved. Uh, we have no, uh, general orders tonight or new business. Well, one item of new business, and that's the presentation of the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two Financial Trends and Condition Report. Something I always look forward to because it's pretty informative. So, Mr. Hune, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, obviously, yeah, this is our annual recap of trend report. We certainly look forward to giving it to the council. It serves as kind of a, a wrap-up for year-end and a preamble for the budget process coming up, which is just run, is actually happening now, but around the corner as, as, as Ms. Reece said. So as a reminder, uh, this, this, we evaluate a variety of different categories and indicators. Um, you can see there on the screen, we, we look at positive, negative, kind of unclassified, and then a variety of, of, uh, different categories from community indicators to expenditures to debt service to our, our final financial strategies. In terms of year-to-year change, uh, I'd say we'd have had a positive shift. Uh, you can see from yourself that we had nineteen positive indicators in twenty twenty-one. As of the close of our twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year, we're at twenty-four. Um, and I'll, I'll go over a couple of those that indicate which ones they were, uh, as we get through the report. Our community indicators there are listed above, assessed value, construction permits, airport usage, Amtrak, unemployment, and so forth. You can see where they're at, uh, all are positive except with Amtrak usage, and we'll talk a little bit about it in a moment or two. First one, of course, is assessed value. We always talk about this. We track it constantly. You can see over the years we've had, um, what I characterize as kind of slight increases every year. We did see, uh, a little bit bigger increase in twenty-one for the levy, or for the, um, assessed value. Uh, we are tracking the twenty-two assessed value now, um, and that's looking to be significantly higher than we've ever experienced. Um, we, we do know there's a multiplier that has already been added to the property that's being estimated as five point nine-nine percent. Uh, of course, that won't be the final. Um, we'll have to imply new construction and any improvements and so forth. So we are looking at a fairly high, uh, increased assessed value for twenty-two. Construction permits also, um, up this year, uh, twelve point six percent for twenty-one. Um, most of that residential remodeling that occurred, uh, in twenty-one, you can see the blue, the blue, um, bar there. Uh, we did have an increase in single-family housing for twenty-one. We are seeing, uh, some slowing in twenty-two for residential, but we're seeing that significant increase in, uh, single-family housing for twenty-two. I think we're already well above what we had for the whole year last year through just through, uh, through our current period. And we expect that to continue. Obviously, the, the council is well aware of the, the circumstances behind, uh, need for housing and the developments going on there across the community and certainly been normal, too. Airport usage and Amtrak usage, again, you can see the numbers there. Uh, twenty twenty was the, the COVID years, you know, in terms of that, uh, significant drop in, in ridership in both areas. Uh, twenty-one had a significant increase, um, kind of returned to not quite pre-COVID levels, but certainly a significant turnaround for the airport. Um, in talking to airport folks, they said some mostly leisure travel has picked up significantly. Um, not so much business, but that's kind of, that's incremental increases for business. Uh, in twenty-two, the numbers they say are looking very strong also, actually above twenty-one right now for passenger travel. That's good to see. And here, um, Amtrak's still struggling a little bit from, um, from COVID. Uh, from what, what I'm hearing, kind of, it's a nationwide issue in terms of air, airline versus, uh, other transportation such as bus and, and, and train. Bus and train hasn't quite recovered yet from, from COVID for a variety of reasons. A lot of them are, that's kind of a daily commute. Um, you know, people are working from home more, they're not making that commute for COVID concerns, restarting that time period. We hope to see that increase, obviously, uh, but for now, it's, it's still, um, kind of catching up, um, with, with airline travel. Unemployment, um, another, another good story here. Um, we're seeing unemployment rates as of March, our fiscal year, and so we take kind of a, a one-day snapshot of where we're at unemployment-wise. You can see that across the board for all the jurisdictions we track, uh, they're all down significantly, which is good. And obviously, a tight labor market has helped significantly in that area. Uh, and, and we, we expect that to continue. Now, we are hearing from the state that we will probably likely see a softening of unemployment in terms of a tight labor market next year. Uh, but for now, we're still seeing what I would say is kind of record-setting unemployment levels across the board for all jurisdictions, certainly for the town. Kind of tied to unemployment and is, is, is workforce, uh, this has also been a, a nice shift. Uh, you can see this has been a, a slide that we talk about e- every year with some interpretation because it continues to kind of slowly decline over the years. Uh, this year, we've had a three point six percent increase. Um, that, that is in large part due to, uh, Rivian and their, and their workforce in the community, and we expect that to continue. In terms of revenue, kind of switching from community to revenue indicators, you can see the ones we checked, uh, all, all positive with the exception of utility tax. And actually, utility tax actually had a small bump up this year, which is unusual, but we still rate it as negative because we've had just years and years and years of kind of decline in that area. Hopeful for the out years, but we'll see. Cover a few of these right now. Uh, this, of course, is the entire revenue picture, uh, for the town, townwide. Um, it's kind of a unique slide that shares you quite a bit of, uh, the different areas of revenue collect. Uh, you can see the largest piece there, which is a bit unusual this year, and I'll explain why, where it shows other finance sources. Uh, that's kind of a catch-off for what we refer to as kind of transfer activity between the town funds. Uh, that's very large this year because if you can recall, in twenty twenty-one, we did move money around from general fund to debt service funds for early payoff of twenty twelve bond issue. That occurred actually in the current fiscal we're in now, not last year, though we did a lot of prep work last year in the financials and the budget to move those funds around. So you can see, uh, that's a large piece. That's not typical. It's usually a smaller sliver, um, just for capital project moving, uh, in some debt service, but not a major debt service like we did just recently. Other areas, local sales tax, fourteen percent, property tax. Other taxes there that blue is utility tax, food and beverage, local motor fuel tax, hotel motel, and a few other ones. Intergovernmental is our state use tax, our, our funds that came in, uh, this year, and also some, and then motor fuel tax from the state. So to give you a flavor there of, of kind of the, the portions and, and the different revenue sources. Property tax, this slide's what we show every year. It gives the, it essentially shows the, the distribution of the property tax rate over all the jurisdictions. The tax here attacks the, uh, a normal citizen. And clearly that, what, what doesn't change is that the line share is unit five, as the council is well aware. I think the town's picking up about eleven point two percent of the tax. We have a history there chart you can see from twenty twelve to twenty twenty-one. We're right around that ten to twelve percent, uh, mark. Uh, we can see that kind of the area you want to stay in terms of that tax rate compared to our, our partners also. Kind of further on, on property tax, uh, two charts here. The first upper chart, the green and orange, shows the municipal tax rate, just the tax rate funding, um, core town government. Uh, the town is, is, has been one of the lowest and remains the lowest over, over several years. Uh, the, the red bar chart is showing the, the tax rates a- across all of our peer governments we compare about for the total community rate, which includes the town, the county, the district, you know, uh, the district eighty-seven, unit five, and so forth. Uh, so it kind of gives you a feel of where we stand there, and we're kind of in the bottom four, if you want to say, in terms of that total, that total tax rate. State and local tax, um, this has been remarkable, to say the least, in terms of this year. Uh, twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year was a year of recovery in terms of, uh, economic activity. Uh, we, individual and business spending rebounded significantly from the COVID year, which I kind of characterize as, uh, twenty twenty-one fiscal year. Uh, we had a full fiscal year of internet sales tax collections that was recent, um, that was passed in January first of twenty twenty-one, uh, effective. Corporate profits are high, wages are high, so we're seeing, we saw a lot of spending, uh, in that time period. Um, we are starting to see that pull back a little bit from what you can, what you hear in the news and what you read in terms of economic updates. We are still seeing some growth. Uh, compare this chart here, kind of shows three fiscal years, but in this, in its sales tax collections by month for our fiscal year, so April to March. You can see the, the blue bars are the, the COVID year. Uh, the red bar is the year that we just closed out and we're most talked about in this presentation. Uh, obviously, well above, that was a big recovery year in terms of, of revenue. You can see by evidence, each month, we were significantly higher than the previous year, except for a couple of months there. Uh, and then the green bars are, are, are available, um, earned revenue, um, from sales tax, uh, for the current fiscal year. And we're see, we're actually still even above our recovery year. Uh, I said that's going to moderate down slowly. Um, we're, we're certain of this, but it's hard to say when, uh, so we'll, we'll keep watching. But right now, very strong year, uh, twenty-one point, twenty-one percent increase in both state and local, which is astounding. Not unexpected with pent-up, uh, demand and certainly, um, uh, business and, and, and individual spending, uh, but that, that will likely slow down. State income tax, a very similar story. Um, again, we're, we're talking about low unemployment, uh, very tight, improved labor market, um, high corporate profits in, in that fiscal year, um, fairly strong wage growth, individual, so that equals more income tax. Uh, you can see seven point five, seven percent, I'm sorry, uh, seven point five million, twenty-five, almost twenty-six percent growth over previous fiscal year. In, in reviewing the state materials and what I've read with them, uh, that's not going to happen next year, obviously. Uh, they do expect some growth, but they expect it to moderate down as recession fears kick in, as people start to kind of slow their spending down. It's interesting, kind of, and you, I'm sure you listen to your own, your own economic updates. You know, we have had two quarters of GDP negative growth, and that's usually signs of an inflation, uh, recession. Uh, the only thing that's kind of uncertain is that we're not seeing, we're seeing a very tight, um, sustained labor market, which doesn't always correspond to recession. So, uh, likely will be in a recession sometime, I'm hearing late twenty-two, early twenty-three. So we will start to certainly see that, that income tax growth reduce. Corporate, there, states indicating that the corporate profits of last year will probably not be sustained in this year, so we'll see some income tax drops there, too. So, uh, more to come there, but we're going to look, probably look more at just a, a slight increase or potentially even flat, uh, for this next coming, upcoming year. Utility tax, I mentioned this before a little earlier, we had a little bit of a surprise there. You can see for yourself, that chart is kind of constantly heading downward. That's for a lot of different reasons that I've talked about in the past. Uh, I think the bump up this year from what we're, we feel is probably just an activity-based, um, indicator where we certainly have more workforce in the community, we have more people living here, uh, some more people are utilizing, uh, utility, uh, tax, or utility services, and then I, I E taxes there. So we're, we still, I think we still mark this as negative, um, but, you know, I guess we're kind of optimistic, uh, to see where that goes. Certainly, the, the growth in population, workforce, uh, is going to help sustain that and, and keep it strong. But we'll see how it goes next year, and we'll, we'll track it every month this year, of course, to see how we stand for the budget.
If I could just jump in, um, Mr. Hune, real quick, just for council. Um, when he says this year, we're talking about fiscal year-end twenty-one, twenty-two. So that's what we're talking about, is this year being the one that just ended, um, for, on all these slides.
Right.
For, so a little bit different than the community indicator slides, which were generally calendar year. This one is, um, by fiscal year-end. And so when he, when he shows, um, for example, on utility tax revenue, it, when he says this year, it's fiscal, fiscal year-end, and, and then how we intend to use that information moving forward in our upcoming budget process.
Right. Thank you. Yeah, I flew between calendar year and fiscal year sometimes, so I appreciate the, the commentary there. Food and beverage, most of the numbers you see in terms of revenue or expense or, or debt are going to be generally fiscal year-end. We just finished, uh, you can see here, food and beverage tax. A little, little bit background on this, in, in twenty twenty, we had a small decrease. If you recall, I know you recall it very well, but right, we were, we were ahead of the game last year or till, till end fiscal year twenty, uh, and then COVID kind of hit in around February, March, we had restrictions hit in March. That actually took us down a little bit, oh, year to year. Then we had a full fiscal year of, of COVID in twenty twenty-one. Um, and then we obviously had a significant recovery in twenty twenty-two that we just closed. So that, that continues to be fairly strong, similar to sales tax in our current year, twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, and again, we'll, we'll look at this going forward as part of our budget process. We will certainly be mindful about, you know, we certainly enjoyed the revenue growth that we've experienced. It's been really unprecedented in a lot of cases, uh, but then that, that kind of growth is not sustainable for a variety of reasons. Uh, so we'll, we'll be, we'll be cautious going forward, but we certainly welcome the, the increase that we've experienced in twenty-two year-end. In terms of expense indicators, most of these are kind of informational purposes only. We can talk about this one here. It's kind of gives the, the council a flavor for where the spending's at. Uh, you can see that obviously line shares and public safety, highway and streets and parks and rec. You can see in twenty fiscal year-end twenty twenty-one, there was a slight drop, and that again was related to our cuts and expenditures, uh, to deal with our COVID preparation in terms of preparing our budget to manage through that process. Uh, we did pick back up again in twenty-two, um, in terms of spending to more of a, a pre-COVID level in terms of parks and rec programs and so forth. So, uh, but generally speaking, those, those categories all stay pretty consistent, uh, year to year. Uh, debt indicators, uh, the, all, all positive. Um, I'll go over a couple of them here. Uh, this one is, uh, essentially shows the overlapping debt. Overlapping debt, debt is essentially just, uh, all the debt for everyone in the community. So we're talking about unit five ourselves, the, uh, the county, the community college, and so forth. We compare that to the overall assessed value of the community, uh, and you can see that overall it drops off. Town outstanding debt, this is the town's debt only. Uh, we did have this, we have, we've had several years of, of, of debt payoff and slow drop-off, and that's, that's structured in our debt program. Uh, we did have a, a small bump up in twenty twenty-two, the year we just closed. If you recall, we, we did some financing for a fire truck and the fire station. We did pay that off at that time, too, but we also put down some new debt. Uh, this also does not include, um, the twenty twelve bond issue we're paying off. That's already been paid off, but it's paid off in our current fiscal year, twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, we kind of prepared for it in twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, and then we paid it off in twenty-two, twenty-three early. So this chart next year will show, uh, a significant drop in the debt, uh, as a result of that, of that payout, about eight point two million dollars. And then final one here, very similar to the first one I showed in terms of debt. This is just our long-term debt against, um, our assessed value. And again, uh, we see that continue to decrease. That balance indicators, uh, quite a few to go through here. I'll just pick off a couple of them, uh, all very positive with the exception of the Health and Dental Fund, which we'll talk about in a bit. Uh, general fund, again, with, with, with the good year of recovery, the significant revenues, the general, uh, understanding of expenditures, we, we did fin- finish the year with a, a fairly strong surplus in fund balance. That, that will probably not happen again for a while, but we'll, we'll certainly see. Uh, the, these funds give us the ability to move into our budget planning, which we're occurring right now for twenty-three, twenty-four, um, with, with some strength and, and, and extra funding per se, a surplus. Uh, we have talked to, to council about uses for that surplus. We can certainly continue to discuss that at length for the budget process. But as you, as we have, as we have told you, we're looking at increasing, um, pension funding and, and pavement operations with those funds. Uh, speaking of pensions, um, we've had, uh, a fairly good year, uh, which surprisingly, I wasn't expecting to see a bump up in our pension funding level. Certainly, when we got around to March of twenty-two, the investment market was tanking fast, uh, and it got even worse after that. So if we were to actually look at these numbers for July or August, uh, it'd be a lot worse. But we look at it in March every year. But we look at it in March every year with our actuaries and then we evaluate going from there. So we did see a bump up in pension funding levels. This is by no means something we certainly celebrate this and be happy. But pension funding is, as I mentioned before, a significant financial headwind that we need to certainly address and make the priority in terms of funding for this budget cycle. And, and as you know, we discussed that in terms of using some surplus for that pension funding. IMRF, this is a, a great story and I wish this is what pension funds for some of our looks like right now, but they will be there someday, of course. We're actually over a hundred percent funded in an IMRF pension. That can happen as markets, as you, as you get to the hundred percent mark. And then the market increases, your, your value of your assets increase above your hundred percent. So that, that is a wonderful thing. And essentially what it translates into is if you get to a hundred percent funding, then you're, then you're not, you're, you're reducing your contribution you can make annually. In terms of the impact for IMRF, it's about a twelve or thirteen percent contribution on payroll costs every year. Over the next few years, it's going to drop almost near zero because we're a hundred percent funded. So that has a significant impact in the town's budget in terms of alleviating the significant contribution. Further balance sheet items, water and sewer fund, both in, in good position at the end of this fiscal year. Looking forward in terms of our fiscal strategies, water is a little bit cautious in, in the out years. But for now, they're, they're end of the year in good position. And we'll, we'll certainly track that through this budget process and part of our five-year budget, five-year budget process. Overall review of our fiscal strategies, you can see there on the screen, general fund reserve strong and positive, liquor reserve strong, strong or positive outlook. Continuity funding, this is an area where we just haven't done it. We hope to restore some of that. That's basically just a kind of a set aside in the current budget for contingency spending, kind of a budget just for things that might come out of the blue. We, we also have fund balances, it serves the same purpose, but this is actually, we're actually budgeting for a piece of that. It's, it's a good policy to do. We've gotten away from it over the years to, to fund other things, but we might, we might try to get somebody in there this year. Debt, debt management always positive, we, we watch that very closely. We, we continue to watch the Health and Dental Fund closely. I'm, I'm not as worried about that fund as I used to be, but still, still a troubling fund, a challenging fund. And we work closely with our HR partners and our, and our consultants to try to mitigate and, and get the best rates we can, given the health environment and the uncertainty that's associated with that, that, that area. Water and sewer funds, we have water fund operating reserves that caution. That's simply because the out years look a little tight compared to our reserve levels of twenty percent, we're like fourteen percent now. We'll reevaluate that as part of the budget process, see where it lands and see the rest of them. And, and these, as the council is well aware, are, are kind of overall guiding principles for the town. We've had them for a number of years. And they control a lot of decision making that, that staff does at a very high level and even a small level in terms of budget process. So we, we fully support these. This is a good time to kind of revisit them as, as, as a council and staff on, on where they're at. And then we actually will do this again when we get to the budget process to see how those are looking. So kind of in terms of wrap up, twenty twenty one, the year we just closed, this was certainly recovery year. Very strong revenue this year, and that's a function of everything I discussed already in terms of pent up spending, full year of internet sales tax, corporate profits very strong, wage growth very strong. And, and the underlying inflation, which, which increases prices and frankly increases taxes. However, that's not going to be necessarily something to sustain. So there, in this year, we had, we went from kind of a very stimulus-driven economy recovery to an economic recovery. So it was, it was really quite strong on all levels. We've had a considerable surplus that we have available to us this year that we'll consider uses for, as we already discussed. The current year, twenty two, twenty three, the year we're in right now. You know, we've got six months more to go. We only have, we only have maybe a first quarter of good information to, to look at, but revenue is favorable. As I mentioned, you saw that the chart where the green bars, we're still above our recovery year of last year for twenty twenty three. Expenditures are tracking at or below budget for us right now, mostly in personnel costs. So we're, we're a favorable position as we always are honestly during, during the year. But things will slow down. Obviously the recession will have its impact. Your rates are going up in terms across the board. So there is concern there and that, that, how that, how that looks, it's hard to say. We'll, we'll watch it and be very careful. But we are going into our budget process for twenty three, twenty four in a good fiscal position, both in, in terms of resources and, and revenue. But again, certainly a lot of uncertainty in terms of the economy. I guess it's almost like a broken record. Last year was good, this year's going okay, and next year's we're struggling about. So that's kind of my, my general flow. In terms of real challenges for the budget year, these are just a couple. We, we need to certainly start dedicating more resources to police and fire pension. We mentioned the surplus and then, and then going forward. And then we certainly have more information on, on road needs in terms of evaluating that through a new study. And, and that requires a fair amount of additional funding that, that is not currently in the budget yet. But we plan to start focusing on that too this year as part of the budget process. That is all I have. Been happy to entertain any questions the council may have.
Questions or comments from the council? Mr. Nord?
Thank you. With the IMRF, I guess overage, we're like at a hundred and sixth and could be more. The money that's over, we're not sending it to them. Will that be automatically put towards the other pensions that we're behind in? Or what happens with those additional dollars?
Those stay in, in that IMRF pension fund. They don't mix that with police and fire, of course. IMRF dictates what we have to pay through their own actual analysis. So in our case, we are going into that analysis for next year in a pretty good position. But they generally dictate to us what the rate's going to be based on their review of where we stand in the funding level and what is going to happen to their own assumptions. So but it stays in the fund as a surplus essentially, and it helps us in out years with contribution level.
Okay, so if the town doesn't have to, have to contribute more, do they tell us, hey, you don't have to contribute X amount? You can contribute X amount minus something because we're over? Or we've done good or?
Sure, their, their analysis will take into account what the funding level is now. And then that'll, that'll essentially create a new contribution for us. If we're a hundred percent funded versus a hundred and six percent funded, the contribution would be a little lower. So it'll, it'll drops down as you get close to a hundred percent when you're over it. That just adds, you know, basically gravy to the calculations. So we'll, we'll contribute less than we'd have to.
Sure, but you're doing budgets for like five years out. So we'll know next year that maybe we've budgeted more, that additional amount that we've budgeted. Will it then be pushed over to one of the pensions that we're behind in?
Well, I guess, I guess.
The payment we're making, not the, not, not the amount that's in the fund based on how the fund was doing.
Right. Well, we, we could decide to, if, okay, so we have a certain amount needed to fund for IMRF. That's going to be decreasing over the next few years because we're at a good funding level. That, that money could be reallocated to pension and police fun, pensions.
I would like to see that happen. Thank you.
But, but let's be clear, the funding rate, we know our funding rates for the next few years. IMRF gives us multi-years of funding rates. So that's the rate we use for budgeting. And, and then if the next year, when we're doing the budget process, IMRF modifies the rates, then you would see that in the next year's budget process. So we, we only get their rates once a year and, and they're multi-year rates, so.
Oh, I get that.
But if there's, but if there's a surplus of any amount in any of our funds, it's up to council to decide, you know, if we want to move that towards a public safety pension, so.
Yeah, I disagree that, that it's up to council. I would like to see before it comes to council, that if we're, if we're going to spend less for the IMRF pensions, that then we're going to see that we're spending more than what we had previously budgeted for the police and fire to kind of do that catch up before it comes to the council and the council's ask, because history has said, what you bring is what we're going to rubber stamp, essentially. So I'd rather see that happen before it comes to us.
Other comments, questions? Ms. Smith?
I, I was looking at some of the trend lines on some of the graphs you were showing. And, and I think we were somewhat surprised through COVID to, to discover that Bloomington Normal didn't have the same dire economic consequences of COVID as a whole. I know there were people who suffered, but we have businesses in town that, that weathered what could have been a catastrophic economic situation fairly well. Do you anticipate that, that our current mix of employment in insurance, education, medical, and, and now Rivian and manufacturing, that you can be a little more optimistic compared to the, the general forecast that other people might be doing?
Sure, I think the more diverse we are certainly helps. And with Rivian, we diversify a great deal more. One thing we look at from our perspective, if we look at what kind of general merchandise versus food and beverage versus automotive. So there's a lot of, we have a lot of general merchandise in the town, the big box stores, Sam's Club, Home Depot, Menards. Those, those things help stabilize revenue sources. Also, our employment base helps stabilize because State Farm, Rivian, Country, Gromark, you know, the universities, the town, the government, they're all relatively stable organizations. You know, Rivian's a startup and, and they, they hope they'll be stable, you know, five, ten, fifteen years from now. But yeah, I think we have a unique economic picture here in Bloomington Normal that is, that helps us ride out storms better than, than most organizations, most cities and towns.
And going into the latter end of the five-year forecast, will you be folding in any forecasts for projected population increase as, as you see the housing developments that are coming before the council and, and putting a, a number, attaching a number to the people who might be occupying those units and then spending money on sales tax and so forth?
Sure. You know, years ago, we had a development model that kind of helped us decide, you know, when a new family moves into town, that transitions into a certain amount of taxes. Now also a certain amount of services too. So we haven't had to kind of dust that off recently, but certainly with, with the five thousand plus new workforce in the town because of Rivian, we will likely have some level of recognition of that in our, our revenue modeling for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Lorenz?
I'd like to ask your thoughts a little bit, go a little deeper on the Health and Dental Insurance Fund. I don't know if you've got that on the, on the big slide or it's at least on our.
I don't have a slide, I apologize, but it is in, it is in your, if you have your books there.
So it's slide number forty eight in our packet. So what's the, what's the short story on that?
I could talk about Health and Dental Fund all night long.
Right, that's why I said what's the story.
But I, but I appreciate that. The, the short story is, you know, we have a, a challenging fund there that we manage the best we can. You know, we have a small employee base, so if we have some significant health issues occur, it, it hits the fund pretty hard. So what's at play here? In the last couple of years, we've had claims above what we expected, to be quite candid. Sometimes we, we work with the consultants over several years, we're ninety percent of expected, a hundred percent, ninety-five percent, a hundred and ten percent, a hundred percent. The twenty, the twenty twenty year, twenty one and twenty two were, were kind of rough years for that. However, we're kind of holding steady this year. Now you look in the chart there in twenty two, we see a, a big increase in, in fund balance. That is not a result of the fund also becoming much more profitable. That's a result of the general fund, water, sewer and library fund as, as there are particular use of that, contributing funds to help shore the fund up financially.
Basically, it was a subsidy that we had to do to the Health and Dental Fund. We moved the Health and Dental Program, the group insurance program to a calendar year fiscal year. So ordinarily, we would come to council by this time pretty much for our insurance renewal. But because it now doesn't renew until January, we've got a little bit of time. So we'll probably come to you in November-ish to renew the program. And it is looking slightly better. What we experienced in the last couple of years were some major claims that hit some stop loss levels. And so we were, we're hopeful for solutions and been, we've been working closely with the Horton Group on that.
Okay, so more to come in November, I guess, with what to expect.
And, and we are holding steady pretty much for twenty two, twenty three right now, compared to previous years. You know, COVID was a, a challenging time, a lot, we, we saw some improvement in claims and we saw a lot of claims afterwards in terms of people returning to the healthcare system to get certain things done. So it's challenging to, to monitor, but we like, like, like Mr. He said, we're, we're working close with Hart Horton and trying to better identify claim history and, and claim cost and, and what to expect. So that, that we're, I'm hopeful for that fund.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Preston?
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks to staff for this. It's a good reminder that sound fiscal management matters and makes a difference. And I appreciate very much town staff taking the lead on that as they have for many years. A couple of things that stand out to me that I, I think we all should be exceptionally proud of is having, continuing to have the lowest unemployment rate of any peer community downstate. Also the lowest municipal property tax rate, while still being able to increase the funding for our police and fire pensions and having, having strong fiscal positions in our water and sewer funds. I think that there's a lot of great things here and I appreciate you guys doing it.
You gotta give me a sign, man.
I just, I turned on my mic. Just a couple of brief comments and then really just one question, kind of a follow-up actually. So to echo some of the comments, we should have coordinated our, our comments a bit, but yeah, it's a testament to a very well fiscally managed community. And, you know, we've, there's been a lot of conversation about debt over the years and, you know, to start to see our debt strategy or debt management strategy put into place. And knowing that even, even the chart going this way doesn't include the eight point two that we paid off, it's even a, a better picture next year when that actually hits, hits the graph. So, and, and more coming. So I greatly appreciate the, the value we're giving our residents at our low rates. And our unemployment is, is a celebration, it's a challenge at some points in our community as well to have such low unemployment. But it's, it's a really welcome sight and, and so much of what Rivian and Ferrero and others are doing in our, our community. Back to the Health and Dental Fund, we're going to pick on that one, I guess. Not, not really, I just, your insight more than anything. And so you, you kind of hinted at this, the impact of COVID on this. And so I guess I'm just curious is, do we have any insight of how much that's a COVID pause and, and rebound versus a new paradigm in our claims experience? Am I making sense with that question?
Yep, yep. I, I think it's a one-time thing, honestly. You know, people came back to the health system and a lot of times they came back with, with bigger issues because they delayed certain things. But we're certainly through all that now. Now we're hopefully getting back to more of a regular health situation, I guess, to, to refer to in terms of number of visits, surgeries and so forth. Again, there's always the, the possibility of, of a very tragic issue in terms of some medical issue for one of our employees to deal with. And that's, that's not wonderful to even be involved in, but those have impacts that, that we cover. But for now, I would, I would suggest from my conversations, I'm not the expert in this, but I, I'm in a lot of conversations with our, with our healthcare folks, that we're, we're kind of getting back to a more regular process now. That being said, healthcare is unpredictable. The inflation cost for healthcare is seven, eight percent a year. So that there's always going to be challenges there for sure. And I would honestly default to Pam or anyone else to give them more guidance.
The only thing I would add is to be cautious because what we have zero control over is specialty drugs. And that's, that's, you know, massive costs. And so, you know, we are tracking which particular brand drugs and specialty drugs will be coming off, you know, will be able to be moving into a, a different tier on the, you know, prescription drug market in the next few years, which might help with some costs. But that is, that is an unknown that we are trying to work with Horton Group as they are with all of their customers on how to, how to navigate the cost of prescription or the specialty drugs specifically.
I would imagine, I know in the conversation of COVID and the big scheme of it, a lot of it's been free. And there's talk of that dissipating and insurance being billed for that. And so I would imagine there's. And so I would imagine there's some, we're thinking about that on some level here, that testing and/or vaccines in the future may come at a cost to our plan.
Right.
Thank you. Great work, appreciate it.
Always a comprehensive and informative report, Andrew. It really helps. This will be on the website as well, right?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Nord?
Thank you. My request for, I guess the next time staff brings us presentations that are going to be on screen, which the presentation was great, I would just like to request that you give us copies, so as we're going along, we can write down notes, like for what slide and things, that would be great.
Right. That was meant to be, and that didn't happen, so I apologize to council for that. The entire, and Mr. Hune's presentation was basically a few, a couple of dozen slides from the overall report. The total report will be on, can be found on the website.
Right. Thank you. Thank you, Andrew. We have no public comment following. Concerns or comments before a motion for adjournment?
Just a reminder that the Sugar Creeks Arts Festival is this weekend, and if my weather forecast can be trusted, we're supposed to have sun both Saturday and Sunday, but it will be on the nippy side.
Mr. Nord?
Thank you. So my concern is, we all took an oath to ensure that the constitution and the laws of the state of Illinois were followed. And it's, I've become aware that there's several statutes in state law that say that in all villages and incorporated towns, there shall be elected president, trustees, clerk, and some other positions. Well, we don't have some of these elected positions. Here's another, let me just cite off some of these so folks listening or Mr. Day can look these up. 65 ILCS 5/3.1-15-5. Another one is 65 ILS 5/3.1-25.90, which says that at the election for trustees, in each village and incorporated town, whether incorporated under a special, under a general or special act, a clerk of the village or incorporated town shall be elected. Another one is 65 ILCS 5/3.1-25-95, which says, in the year 1985, in every, every incorporated town, blah, 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 a president, a clerk, an assessor, a collector, and a supervisor shall be elected. So Normal, we don't have some of these positions. The code, the state code, talks about and describes how you appoint people to these vacant positions. So getting back to the oath, is Normal, I'm not an attorney, I'm just a layman, but we don't have these elected positions. Is Normal operating as a compliant incorporated town? Because if we're not, that's a big issue. So I'd like to hear, are we? Because if we're not, we've got a lot of things to do. There's an election coming up, and we need to let the public know if these are positions that they should be voting on or not.
Mayor Kus, I don't want to get into a back and forth since this is council concerns moment, so I will just respond that the town is functioning legally, and I don't think it would be appropriate for Mr. Day to go into a legal explanation, or, you know, if council wants to talk about this particular issue later on, we'll set up a time for council members to meet with Mr. Day if they have concerns on whether or not we are operating legally, but we are.
Then I guess my request is, Mr. Day, would you please send something to the council in writing so that way our constituents that are asking us, we can give them some assurances to hears what the legal position of the town is, because that's where all this is stemming from. Thank you.
And I would request, Mr. Nord, that you meet with Ms. Reese and Mr. Day before we go down that path. So reach out and meet with them and have that discussion. If that doesn't solve your issue, then we can take another step. Mr. Preston?
Thanks, Mayor. I had to go back and look at my calendar because it had been so long, I couldn't remember if we had had a council meeting since then or not. I believe we have not, and I want to acknowledge Cultural Arts and the CDM for an outstanding day of play that was a couple Saturdays ago. If my recollection is correct, that was the largest event of its kind that we've ever had in the town. I was able to pop over for a little bit, could not have asked for better weather, and I think that to all the staff who put a lot of effort and a lot of time into that, it certainly showed. Thanks to everybody, and congratulations.
Thank you. Mr. McCarthy?
Once again, we should have coordinated our comments. Mr. Preston, I was gonna, or I am gonna comment on that. Got to work on the bike rodeo on the worldwide day of play, one of our largest bike rodeo turnouts. If you haven't ever been out there, there's so much amazing, cool stuff to see, staff and that is out there coordinating and trying to make it all happen, agencies, Friends of the Constitution Trail, out there with volunteers, helping ensure kids have a fun and educational time. And then when it's time to close, all the staff that comes out of the background and just makes it all disappear. I think my colleague called him the Department of Magical Elves, but that come and take it away. But there was thousands of kids that had an amazing day of play and educational opportunities, and we gave away a bunch of bicycle helmets, I think almost 300, and put a couple hundred or more kids through bike safety and bike education, and all thanks to our town staff for making that possible on the streets of Uptown and coordinated. So a big tip of the hat and a great thank you. Ms. Reese, to you and your staff.
You. Motion for adjournment?
Second.
Please call a roll.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Loren?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mayor Kus?
Aye. We are adjourned.